Follow the meeting to order. Of allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in it. All right, tonight, we do have an executive session meeting at the end of this, at the end of this contract matters and personnel matters. So do I hear a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
You're second.
In a second, any comments or questions by the board, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Approval of minutes, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of 5:13, 24? In a second, any comments or questions by the board on the minute? All in favor? And any opposed? Motion carried. And quickly move on to the road report.
I don't have a lot to say, honestly. We're finishing up hopefully on Ferencloft. We were hoping to be done basically out of there today. But we blew a hydraulic line. I took a nice bath. And that set us back about three quarters of a day. So we'll be hopefully done and gone from there tomorrow.
It even tastes bad, doesn't it?
It does, yeah. It really does taste good though.
Do you have to send it out to fixer? Are you guys?
No, we fixed it. Thank God. It wasn't like an expensive thing.
Oh, and it'll just down, knock you right down.
Yeah.
You gotta refill the tank. Sometimes you gotta bleed the pump. How old was that machine?
That excavator is 2017. And it's getting, it's now, you know, we're starting to regularly have to do something here or do something there with it. We lost one of the rubber pads off from that last week actually. And the rest of them aren't in too great a shape. But I am hoping to hear back from United Ag and Fair for John Deere. Had them come out and kind of do an appraisal on our, all of our John Deere equipment and our excavator, even though it's a cat. So we can start doing some trade-in values, figuring out trade-in values and start kind of putting together some sort of a
Not a mini changeout?
No.
No?
No. It's a full size. It's just not, you know, it's a smaller, smaller full size.
Could be going around the same size with replacement or anything.
I'd like to go, I'd like to go a couple sizes bigger. I'd like to go as much bigger as we can without really making the machine itself. I think it could use a little bit more power, more track power, more hydraulic pump power. But size wise and, and you know, for what we do, for some of the narrow places that it goes, I think the size, overall size of the machine itself is pretty good, but as far as, you know, slightly stronger, a little bit more powerful, I think that would be, would be good for it. It gets used awful, awful often.
Um, when we go a little bigger on that, with our trailer, be able to haul?
Yeah.
That's another thing we gotta really think about.
Absolutely, yeah. We will, uh, have a 20 ton trailer. I think our excavator is, uh, in our 11,000, something like that. So we're
It's probably, you know, probably ton.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're well good for that.
You got a 20 ton trailer?
Yes. Yeah, um, so I, I, I am trying to, you know, keep that in mind and work towards a goal of prioritizing how we can start changing out the rest of our fleet without getting some sort of
Not breaking the bank?
Deficit or, yeah, or, um, and get the best resale value off of the equipment we do have. Or see if there's no resale value. If it's not worth it, then I guess maybe we keep it and run it as long as we can.
I know, I know a nice mini cat runs around 70, 70, quarter to 80,000.
Yeah, I think this was 60 or 70,000 when they got a brand new, if I'm not mistaken.
Right now.
I'm sure when 17, 24, I'm sure that's changed significantly. Like, you know, put a tandem's gone up in just two years now, so.
Are we doing, are we doing roadside mowing or are we, are we not doing roadside mowing?
We have leased a Goonna order.
It's the one with the big arm that?
Yeah, it has a big arm, yeah. That'll be coming in June, I believe it is.
One of our guys will do it. We're just
One of our guys will do it, yep. And, um, we have it for, I believe it's two weeks in June and I think it's also two weeks in August. I have to, I'd have to look on, go home to the dates and timeline, but
Does that have to go side, the side of the grass?
You can do the side. You can do the edge of the road and basically as far out or up as you can reach with it. So we'll be trying to do like side banks on inside corners so we can get good visibility.
At 12 foot deep?
Corners and stuff. I'm not sure what it is, to be honest with you. Um, it's the same mower that if anybody saw the green John Deere out and about last year, it's that same.
Oh, okay, good.
Yeah, so, yeah, we have, we'll have one of our group members will be dedicated to doing that during the time that we have that and
They know how to use it and it's something we have to train them.
Well, that's why we're gonna dedicate one person to it, because not a single one of us has ever used them before. And we don't wanna throw one guy in it, get him kinda used to it. We just, we don't have the time for it. And we're not gonna have the room for errors, you know, we all try to figure it out.
Have you been back to Lewis Road?
We have not been back to Lewis Road. Uh, from here, we'll be going to finish up our MRGP work on, on, um, on Hill Ranch Road.
Oh, okay.
And then, and then, um, we have a culvert to change out on Endless Brook Road, which we will probably do after the, the new fiscal year. Um, cause it's a rather large culvert. It's gonna be kind of pricey, so. Let's start that with a fresh slate.
What they done by you, what they done by your place?
Yeah, it's good.
Yeah.
And with the recipient, nice, nice culverts.
There's a couple culverts down the other end too.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've had to change a few. Um, I think it's kind of, we were pulsive last week about, um, making it known publicly about the right of way. I know in town, a lot of people have water lines, private water lines for their camps, uh, electric lines and sap lines running through culverts. We cannot be responsible for damage to, to these objects or items. Uh, you know, there's a culvert that, that the outlet end has a stone lookout built over top of that. If we ever had to change that culvert, we would have to destroy somebody's lake lookout point or whatever you wanna patio kind of thing. Um, uh, we, we tried to go back and open up these culverts a little bit further down, about halfway down Ferencloft Road. And, uh, we did hit a, a small one and a quarter inch black plastic water line. And, you know, fortunately, it's not, it's not a big deal. It's a rather simple and expensive fix, but nonetheless, they also catch leaves running, running this, these hoses and lines through the culverts. They, they catch and they hold leaves and then you get plugged culverts and, so I just kinda wanted to throw that out there that, that can't be
You'll find electrical lines running through a culvert?
We found that last week, yeah.
How do they do that with water? Is it water in those culverts? Cause they're coated, so it's not
Well, it will affect it if they take the culvert up and it goes into the water and there's water in it. Yeah, that's quite concerning. That's, uh, yeah.
We do, we do attempt, uh, a very, we do really attempt to get ahold of the landowners that we can tell where they come from. But some of them are so far buried or have leaf litter from 20 years over them. You know, we're, we're trying to maintain or reopen a culvert that maybe hasn't been touched in 15, 20 years. And the bank slides, sod slides, everything kinda slides, because it's all such a big embankment down there that, uh, it ends up so buried, you, you can't even tell what's where and you, you're, yeah, it's just, it's a, it's a tough situation, but we try to be as careful as we can. Respectful of other people's property, but
You should know though, there should be some kind of sign that they let you know that there's wires, there's nothing with these wires in there.
Yes.
We do inspect that inlet and outlet and everything, you know, we, yeah, we, we, we take the proper precautions before we just start doing anything like that. Yeah, exactly. And we'll continue grading as needed. Other than that, that's kind of where we're at.
Yeah.
Unless any other crucial things pop up and change our course of action again.
Anybody have any questions for Joel?
Yeah, me too.
All right, good. You don't have to hang if you don't wanna.
That's true.
Then you got your wife and kids.
I just got a nice, good, nice coffee. They're already going to bed.
There you go. All right. Thank you, Joel.
Thank you.
All right, community development, Sarah on the line or?
Yeah, it's you.
Sarah. Can't hear you.
Muted, muted.
Hold on just a second. It usually starts to pick up after a minute.
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Okay, great. Thanks. Um, so fortunately, I'm gonna be quick tonight. I don't have a lot to report. Um, I spent most, most of last week, um, working on the Fourth of July and organizing the Fourth of July. So it's coming along really well. Um, thank you Cheryl for your help and the chamber's been helping a lot. Um, the contact, uh, Morgan on the campus has been helping and, um, things are, we've started advertising. So, um, that's what I, I did last week along with the presentation that I mentioned at the last select board meeting in New Hampshire. Um, so that's my report for tonight. I'm happy to answer questions about anything that the select board might wanna know about tonight, but that's all I have to share.
I wanna thank you for, uh, sending out all that stuff for the merger. A little bit, it's a little bit of light reading, but it's all right.
It'll keep you busy.
All right, anybody have any questions for Sarah?
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you.
You're off the hook. You're off the hook.
I'm off the hook. All right.
Thank you, Sarah. Have a good night.
You too.
Town managers report. Uh, one thing I have is we, uh, need to reappoint me as a town health officer. Um, my term expires on June 30th. So, do I hear a motion to reappoint Paul Donaldson as a town health officer?
That position you wish to have. My dear ass.
It's interesting now because the state, um, fire marshals, whatever they call themselves now. The, the state passed a law last year that they're, they are, that office is helping with rental housing inspections. Um, and we're still trying to figure out our, my role versus their role. We did a rental house inspection last week. Um, in the state, the state was someone that did the primary inspection and reported and, um, told the, told the landlord what needed to be repaired in the house. So, um, yeah, we're, we're still trying to figure out their role, my, uh, town's role in enforcing septic issues. Um, and this came up a number of years ago where I contacted the agency of natural resources and said, I have reports of a suspected failed, um, system, uh, uh, septic system. Who should I direct the people to report it to? And the state said, well, that's the town health officer. And I said, well, doesn't make a lot of sense because the state took jurisdiction from the municipality in 2007 over septic systems? So I said, why, why would they expect the health officer to have any training in it if you don't, if they don't have authority over it anymore? Um, so there were, the one that we dealt with last week, the tenants inspected, uh, septic, uh, issue. Uh, they, they reported it to the, um, state enforcement officer. And he supposedly isn't investigating it. So I guess that's a long way of saying, sure, I'll do it again.
I would like to point Paul as a health officer. Wait, you're a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions by the board?
Thank you, Paul.
All in favor? Any opposed? You don't have to change a hat.
Yeah, if you wanna sign this. At the bottom where it says sign. You want to pass it in hand? Thank you. Um, I reached out to, uh, Art's a cat that was helping me assess this building and considering the stone bridge where town offices, I had spoken to them last year about assisting with the design of the town garage. And so I reached out to them. I'm waiting to hear back from them, um, to see if they're still able to help us. Not a lot to report. There's several things I want, I need to report to you in the executive session. Oh yeah, thank you. Um, so I'm, Alan and I met with the, uh, and the state engineer and the, the, um, engineer from BHB on the Route 31 South Bridge here down here. And he reminded me to, to inquire the select board whether or not they had any comments about the proposed plans. I believe I had sent them to the board.
Mm-hmm.
Um, like some time ago, but I don't know, I know we never officially said, does anyone have any comments about the plans? Um, they did have, uh, right of way meetings with all the affected folks. Um, they're in the process of tweaking some things, but I think generally it looks like, it looks like, uh, at least at this time, it looks like they have, they have sort of the meaning of the minds, um, as far as the right of ways it'll be required for the bridge. Um, and, and once they have the meaning of the minds, at least as far as paper goes, then they hand it off to the negotiator to deal with the compensation aspect of the bridge, um, the temporary bridge and the final obstructive bridge. Um, but that's projects moving along, um.
If everything goes well with easements and the landowners, is a temporary bridge slated to be put in this year?
Um, no, I don't think so. Um,
Make four.
Yeah, they're, they're talking about, let me think about this. They're talking about construction of a new bridge, 2025, 2026, 2027, I think is what, you remember Alan?
Everybody mentioned the idea of getting the new bridge in fall, late in the year next year.
I think it was, yeah.
Two construction seasons after that.
Starting, yeah. They're really good about company and like they did the Throw Road Bridge. It's nice to even, you do get information, you know, that's
That temporary bridge wouldn't be put in until next year around?
Correctly, right now, but I think everything is still very up.
Okay. I can just answer questions because they've been, people have been asking.
Um,
Yeah, temporary bridge can be, a few of once be
It's gonna be on the, on the, um, west side of the bridge.
Towards the trestle.
The west side.
Has everything good with the Throw Road Bridge? Did it go down and do that or is that coming up?
Yeah, they're just stripping this, the, um, staging off the bottom, underneath side of the bridge is somewhere, what I understand. Um,
So is that all on Route 31 Bridge?
Uh, yeah, I think so. So unless, unless you folks want any comments me to bring back to the state.
I thought the plans looked good.
You didn't stand them?
I understand.
Yeah, hard done. So is it
Well, we, we've been through it already.
I, I put time on it, it's okay. Can we tell where the temporary bridge was, was gonna be?
Yeah, well, it's on the west side. But, um,
The one thing they have, um, they're being very sensitive about deserves that large sycamore tree
Yeah.
That on that, on that side where the temporary bridge will go.
Yeah.
Um, they think they're gonna be able to preserve it with some trimming, additional trimming. Um, so
And the bridge is gonna be able to take all the quarries?
It's gonna be a one lane bridge controlled by traffic light.
Mm-hmm, that's okay.
Um, it'll have the sidewalk on it.
And they'll be rated, I would imagine to be rated for just under a superload, which would be 150,000 pounds.
I, I can't
See, that, that's something we'd have to ask the engineer.
Yeah.
We like the Lewis trucks that are full of slate.
Yeah, the slate, you trucks usually 80 to 90,000 pounds loaded. And super, superloads are 150,000 pounds on the bottom. Yeah. And if you have the superload, you gotta take the, engineers have to take a, um, flexion of the bridge and then take another flexion of the bridge after the load goes over to see if you've taken the rebound.
Well, the one just said no restrictions, so I wanted to add that up, yeah.
So anything that you wouldn't even be to
Yeah, what about, um, the Throw Road Fitzgerald?
Let's finish this conversation if you don't mind.
Oh, okay. I thought you had, don't, gotta move on.
Thank you.
Anything that I need to bring to the state?
I thought it looked good.
Yeah. So I had a meeting with Kevin Fitzgerald who, um, is doing the study down here on the Throw Road Bridge. Um, on another project in town. Uh, he did do a, a preliminary site visit, the bridge down here. Um, so what he told me is they're starting to work on some different models in the office. Um, so I did, I did remind him that we should have a kickoff meeting. Um, and I did advise him of a couple of folks in town that are very, um, uh, wanna be very informed about that project. Um, so, uh, I think he's gonna try to schedule something with this board to kinda have a, at least put a face to the name kind of thing and what he plans on doing. So I'll, I'll ask him when we can put him in on a regular schedule, select board meeting schedule.
They do, I'm trying to think now, because that bridge took so many meetings, um, the Throw Road Bridge. Are they gonna have another like community meeting where they explain it so that people come to us, they explain it?
The Throw Road Bridge?
No, they did that already, but I'm saying for this new bridge of it, is that something that they'll do as we get going? They'll explain it to the, like they did the Throw Road Bridge or no?
I think, I think they'll, I think the, the scope work includes a public meeting sort of after they've done their analysis.
Okay.
Um,
Yeah, that's something that really, we really need to have with the public meetings.
Cause they certainly can speak to it.
So everybody, everybody, you know, has, you know, wants what's going on.
I suspect, I mean, I don't know what, the, what this, what the study is gonna show. But I suspect there's gonna be, you know, some members of the public that feel strongly one way or the other regardless of what the study shows.
Yeah.
Well, that's what happened with the Throw Road Bridge, but yeah.
Well, that's their right and, you know, we should allow them to come and, and listen to it here.
Well, this bridge will look identical. There, there, there's no choice on this bridge.
It's a story.
This is true.
Yeah, we're trying to move on.
They gotta redo the metal.
They're gonna redo the upper part.
Right.
I don't think everyone's
Oh, no, I thought we had moved on to the bridge.
I did too, but that's all right. Now we're back to the Trestle Bridge.
Yeah, the, what bridge you wanna talk about, we can talk about.
The Trestle Bridge.
We've been
Bring up another bridge. We have to take care of
Well, hang on, we got more.
Um, so that's all I can say on the Throw Road Bridge. Um, it does remind me that that, that this one, Throw Road, starting today, right? Wasn't, was it closed today?
Yes, closed.
Okay. Through the, through, through Saturday. They're gonna try to get this out of there before Saturday. Um, Want to throw some more bridges in there?
Five bridges.
I'm sorry. Well, yet we got all them under control while they're moving forward.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, and we got our health officer in place, reappointed Paul, um, our zoning person and our transfer station person. July 1st is coming up and we're in our new budget season. Um, and can, can we put out for, for people that are interested in those positions? So that maybe we can get them on board ASAP, which will free you up on the zoning?
Um, yeah, we, uh, I have, Sarah put together, uh, um, description for the zoning position. I haven't looked at it yet. Um, and I started tweaking the, the position description for the transfer station that we had put together. Most recently tweaking that a little bit.
Okay.
Um, so it's, I think we're almost ready to, um, start advertising for those positions.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
Good. All right. Anything else say you have? Anything on any other bridge you wanna talk about?
Um, not at the moment, no.
Oh, I wanna, I wanna bring up, this might be the time to do it, though. We talked about, I have looking at the dog warning and the dog things. We've got a few from everybody else. Should that be like a subcommittee where a couple of us get together and look at them? Because you can't really put something in the handbook. I don't know if we should redo something like that and put anything new in there?
Well, the way I understand it is if you're gonna revise your animal control ordinance, um, you know, you gotta have public hearings on it. Um, I did meet with, uh, I had a conversation with the deputy dual who's assigned to, um, currently. He also works part-time for the Fairhaven Police Department and one of his duties is animal control officer. And we discussed, I think we discussed it before, that, uh, Fairhavens has a fairly robust, um,
Compared to ours.
Unforgiving, less, I would say unforgiving, um, animal control ordinance. Um, and I think we discussed that the VLCT model is similar to ours, but it has, in my opinion, I think, a paragraph that we could benefit from that puts a little bit more teeth in the ordinance. Um, so, I mean, I don't know if he's needed to form a subcommittee or we just circulate the, the ones that we're looking at and everyone look. I know you've looked at them, Alan's looked at them, I've looked at them. I don't know if
Well, just a little bit different, but there's things from each of them where, where, obviously with all the things happening, we have to be a little bit more, have a little more teeth, I think, in ours, or we have to go to the, we're gonna have to go to the community and say, we need money to do some of the things that they wanna do. Yeah, I don't know. I mean, we can't put them in your truck and we can't put them in your garage all the time. So you gotta figure that out, but you're gonna, you're gonna follow one of those and we have to have a place to follow those rules. We don't have that. So you can't say, pick them up and take them because they did that.
And, and the town manager cannot be the health officer, the zoning administrator, the dog catcher. This has gotta stop. So he needs to be the town manager. Which means he's gonna manage the people that are the health officer, the dog.
We need to come up with a plan because this isn't going away and it's been
No, it isn't. So let's get our ordinance done first. Get that in place before, and it has to be public. And also along with that, we gotta start thinking about, we need somebody, we need to hire somebody to enforce and take it off his plate. And take it off his plate.
With dogs, huh?
A dog.
Can we get copies of Fairhaven to the state?
We have them already, yeah.
I can send you copies.
Yeah.
That'd be good.
Yeah, we'll look at them. Before everything is completed though, we'll have to get. Be a person that will do this job. And it'll have to be a big position.
Well, we have to look at what we want them to do as a job, because they're all just.
That's why we need the ordinance first.
Yeah, so we have to really get together, think about what pieces we want in it, what can we afford, or what do we have to budget for? If this is the route we wanna go, because right now it's like. I mean, as we throw it to Paul, make that decision, we don't have this, we don't, so it's hard to. Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we can't.
We'll get the ordinance, get it pretty well situated, and before we vote on it, we'll get our other ducks in order. So that when we do, um, adopt it. Everything's in place.
Well, I mean, since we're talking about animals, um. Cats are also an issue and, um. I, I've had an agreement with someone in the village. That is trapping. Cats, uh, and I'm bringing them to the humane society and. Sometimes they're feral cats and. Uh, the humane society reached out to me recently and said, you can't, you gotta stop bringing these feral cats. To us, because we can't handle them, to clean them, to, to. Whatever you call it.
Yeah, you get them.
Yeah, right, inspecting whatever fits them, whatever. So, um. That's, that's, I think, that's gonna be a sensitive issue, um. Because, you know, the, it. If the humane society has already dealt with a stray cat, whether it be feral or otherwise. Uh, they have a, there's a system that you, you can identify them. And. Uh, you're supposed to leave those animals where they are. And so, you know, I said that's, that's difficult for the animal control. Say, well, you're supposed to leave them here and people are like, I, I don't want them in my backyard. And alternatively, the option is euthanize them.
You know, they give so many days, you know. No one wants to, they contact them and they have to do something like that, yes.
So, that's a, you know.
That is a touchy subject.
No, Scott used to, used to have these very reduced price.
Feral is the only place that has them now, they don't do it here anymore.
What do you mean, reduced price clinics for what?
You can bring in a cat and give it space.
Yeah, it's like thirty five.
Well, we're talking about stray animals, stray cats.
But the stray, because most people don't wanna get them shot and don't wanna get them neutered, I know, I have that in my room, yeah.
The army does with stray cats.
Having kittens, having kittens, having more, yes, it is, because they can't afford to take the two and go get them.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's an issue. It's, it's an issue, um.
Sure, yeah.
So.
The dogs and cats.
I don't know, that's, uh. You know, I can't just, I can't see myself saying to people, oh, you caught this cat, but they're telling me it should stay where it is. And alternatively, you know, it's, that I don't think is, is. You know, the answer, or at least some people's minds.
When you have more farm than barn, that's, that's where the cats could go.
Well, the, the issue with that is.
They're gonna drop them off when I roll.
The issue with that is, is the way it's explained to me by the, the Rutland County Humane Society is. If a cat is accustomed. To being in, they call them colonies, a colony in the village of Polkney. And you bring them to the farm. The cat's like, this isn't my home. And they try to find their way back to the village's pole. Which inevitably they get run over by a car, or whatever. So, you know, I don't think the answer, at least according to. Rutland County Humane Society, it's more of expert on the matter than I am. It's not the answer, in fact, when I first started in this job, I think it was the first week, they called me and said, please. Don't do what some people do, bring them to the farm and drop them off, because that doesn't work.
So that doesn't work.
It's unfair to the farm, making it hard to say or to.
So, I don't know what the answer is, you? Don't you, don't you have cat farm or something?
Do you have a cat farm?
Well, you have one, you know, two, and then you have more, and then they multiply, and that's, seems to happen in my neighborhood, so they. They do, I, it's a fact.
Well, anyways, that's, that's gonna come up, I think, sooner rather than later, because they told me, don't bring. You know, and there's a, there's a test to see, oh, how mean is this cat, you kind of stick your pen in there and if it freaks out, well, it's definitely feral, but if it doesn't. Maybe it's not. Apparently, that trick doesn't work.
Maybe one of the, and I know this is off topic, but maybe one of the things is seeing if the town can have some kind of pay for. Spaying and neutering like some of the other places, that's why Gramble, some of those places didn't do, like a. You know, a discount, reduce rate, because it's, it costs like, one dog was like five hundred dollars. Yeah, and you have to get blood worked on before, so it's an expensive process and people, number one, if they have dogs, yeah. I don't know, I know other places do it, but it's, I don't, it's not our job to do that, but. We gotta figure something out with.
I make that, do you fit me, Paul? Up in town, sorry, they don't have.
I don't know, if you talk, in particular in the village, if you talk to some. People, there's, there's clusters of them on such and such street, such and such street.
Go this way?
And. You know, and if you listen to the humane society, those people that are doing, that are feeding those cats. Are doing a service to the community, according to the humane society.
Doing a service?
If you're, if you're feeding, feeding the stray cats. And particularly if they've already been, um, um, spayed or neutered and released back into the community. They're, they're supporting that colony. And the people that live around there are angry that they're doing that. Um, so. I don't know the answer, I mean, a couple of years ago, there was one house that took twenty-eight cats out of it.
Oh my God.
Um, so that was one house.
Just Jones had fifty in his trailer. They were disgusting, beyond disgusting.
They go in my, my neighbors, they go in my barn, I kicked them out, they go in the barn, they go in, they do smell, they do something to the grill, so. I know, I can speak for my neighbors too, and, and it's, yeah. It's not a good thing, so that's another thing that they. Really keen on, on the dog warding their pets.
Especially with summer here.
Okay, yeah, since the spring, I've brought. Five, five or six from that one location in the humane society.
Did they catch them in like a harbor heart, is that how they?
They have, my harbor heart trap, then they have their own harbor have, have a heart trap.
And that's on the far end, yeah.
Hmm, no, I think it's four, four, but that's, you know, that's just one.
Once you can catch one, you can't catch.
Okay. Anything else, Paul?
Um, no, I don't think so.
We, we lost, okay.
Cat Nat?
Cat Nat.
Um, anybody else have any questions for Paul?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're going to transact in the other lawful select board business. This time, I think we're pretty good. Rutland Regional Planning Commission? So, anything going on with that, or has got anything on that?
There was still her? I don't think she's here, man. No, not, I see that, but I don't think she's, oh, she is there.
Hello?
No update from.
For me?
No update from our RPC, no meeting since the last meeting.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay. Other comments and concerns?
Just have one comment, it's based on the current conversation, um. I applaud Cheryl and Paul for addressing the stray animal problems and the dog problems in town. I know, um. The humane society used to have the trap neuter release program, I think that's what Paul's talking about.
Yeah.
They, they spay or neuter the cat, clip in, clip in ears, which is an identifying feature that the cat is already neutered. Um, and they do prefer that they go back to where they found them, because they love. I don't know what the answer is for getting people to be more responsible pet owners. Maybe that's something that might come up in researching how to update our dog control ordinance. So, thank you for working on that, it's much appreciated.
Right. So cats, they don't, they don't need to be registered?
No, they don't.
I didn't know.
I mean, that, but that, that might be an answer, but you'll, you'll get a lot of, uh, work for that.
I mean, if you, if you talk to the clerks, there's, she would give you a percentage of how many dogs. She estimates are not registered. I know in my encounter as the animal control with dogs. Probably. Yeah, probably at least every one of those dogs is not registered. And there, there, if you had a facility, because our current control, animal control office, or, um. Ordinance says, if it's not registered, you can hold it until the people register. Well, when you, when it's a Saturday afternoon and. You know, I'm doing errands and now I've got a dog in my possession. I have to say more often than not, I just say to the people, can you, here's your dog, can you please just register it? Whether or not they do, I don't know.
If they register it, they have to prove that it has a tray, these are shots, and that's another issue, I mean, here, register, because they don't have the. Yeah.
Inoculation.
And if I had a facility, I might say, okay, on Monday, you can have the dog back, once it proves to me that you're ready to.
A lot of work there, a lot of work.
Maybe if you do build an in-town garage, you could have a facility.
There's a small facility right now.
Most of the old ones, standing.
And to answer your question, Mark, no, I have not noticed a cat problem on the town roads, I have, however. Moved an excessive amount of turbels onto the road this year.
Those registered turbels?
Sure, I didn't see any tags or.
The females will pass away.
I don't know. Okay, any other comments or concerns from the public?
I mentioned taking a hydraulic bath today, I just wanna clarify, um. It was not an environmental issue, I caught, was not caught by the cows. Um, so fortunately for the ground, unfortunately for my clothing.
Yeah, those reservoirs aren't any more than a three and a half to five gallons. Well, depends on which forty gallons.
It's about fifteen. Wasn't the whole thing anyways, it was a lot.
All right, thank you for clarifying that.
Any other comments or concerns? All right, going on, for your motion to sign the board orders.
Yeah, you can sign the board.
I got a second. Any comments or questions by the board? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion Gary. We do need to go into executive session for contract matters and personnel.
Unit one VSA, section three thirteen A one, make motion. For finding that the first general public knowledge clearly placed this board or person involved at substantial disadvantage of certain matters related contracts for discussed outside of executive section. Unit one VSA, section three thirteen A one A, I move the motion into executive section to discuss contract.
Right, you're a second in person. Any defenses by the board?
Said yes, you do.
All in favor for executive session? Any opposed? Motion Gary, we're in executive session at seven fifty.